Wasn't that?
Yeah. Who's in the?
You must have gotten.
Okay, welcome. Do we have applicants for Franklin Park with us?
Morning.
Morning. Morning. So you will have access to share the screen. What we'd like is to just have you kind of take a moment, run us through your updates based on our conversation from last time. I'm sure we'll have a couple of questions, but we got about fifteen minutes of time. So, Lord George.
Ed Kaplan George, you want to take over here?
Do you want to take the screen?
Ed? I mean, Ed, are you here? He's here. All right, well.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry. I was, uh, let's see, um, okay, I'd like to take control of the screen. Okay, can you see?
We got it.
Okay, great. All right, uh, I guess we'll start at eight twenty. Site prep plan, not much has changed there. Let's see, the layout plan, we, uh, I think we have a updated the dumpster size, maybe the location a little bit. Uh, we worked out the grading in a little more detail. Uh, we'll flip to the next sheet. There's the dumpster enclosure. It's a vinyl, um, uh, vinyl fence. This, and then we've worked out the planting plan in greater detail. Um, really, the, the, uh, the meat and potatoes of the project is over at the eight twelve site. But let's see, I'll finish up on eight twenty. Uh, I've got the roach control plant set. We got all the site details dialed in. Uh, we're in pretty good shape with the eight twenty site. Go over to the eight, eight twelve site, uh, site prep plan. You see the extent of the clearing on the site. Um, worked out the, the drainage. Uh, we went out and did soil testing out at the site and, uh, we had infiltration in three locations. We've done a, infiltration basin over there. Uh, it's a rather large basin, but very shallow discharge point is over at the north, uh, north end or northeast corner of the site, uh, adjacent to Franklin Park Drive. The water and sanitary connections are all in, um, on the Franklin Park Drive side of the building. Very, um, tight layout. Man, not much has changed on this plan since, um, we were last before the board. Uh, we've finalized a planting plan. Uh, and then really the rest of the plans are pretty, pretty straightforward. It's a pretty simple project, uh, you know, new building, parking, um, and then the stormwater management facilities. So I guess I'll open it up to questions.
Yeah. Have you sent your SWIP into County DOT or County what?
We haven't done that. We, it would go to, um, Anadaga County, um, Highway Department.
Yeah, and WEP wants it also. So if you could send it to those two departments and, um,
Oh, yeah, okay.
So when you get something back from them.
Yep, okay.
County DOT also wants you to report a transportation for the, uh, access plan.
Okay.
Once you do that, just make sure that you're copying along any final resolution.
Yep, we'll do that. Yep.
Um, Mark, you have questions? So this being over acres was obviously required. Uh, Mark, do you have any questions? I know that you're starting to kind of dig through the materials.
Uh, no, no comments at this point. Like I said, I'd like to do a review on it and then, uh, we'll, we'll get back to him with, with the comments.
And Ed, obviously the, the concern was with the neighborhood properties there and the water drainage. All of that's kind of been considered the, uh, the adjacent parcels that are kind of filtering through this one, you know, all that's been considered. I just wanted to mention.
Yes, that's all been considered. Uh, we sheet flow off of the, uh, properties that are on Kirkville Road. They sheet drain into our basin and then flow through that.
Okay.
We actually have a berm along the north property line here that will, um, keep the water within our basin.
Go to the other side. I think that's where the problems have been. Yeah, you just showed it. So, um, Ed, will you also add a drawing sheet to both this and the eight twenty property? Um, that shows a kind of master site plan?
Yeah, we could, we could add a, a, a cover sheet that is the overall plan. Yes.
Yeah, we'd like to see all of the buildings that are, you know, accessed from these drives, parking, buildings, property lines. So, and you can highlight which property for which set. I know that you're breaking them into the two various parcels, but I'd like it, like to have a cover sheet that has the full site on it so that we can see everything that's there. It's just all kind of very broken up right now.
Well, we had that originally and then we broke it up. Uh, okay.
Uh, that, that includes the parcel next, not, not next to this one, but the one.
The one to the west.
Yeah.
I think there's four or five parcels in that grouping. So we'll show, uh, sort of a neighborhood plan that shows all of that. We don't have survey for all of it. So we'll probably do, uh, uh, the site plan with a aerial overlay.
Yeah, I mean, you just said buildings at, building outlines like the, like the drawing you have here.
Yep.
Property lines, accent. I mean, I'm not sure that for the neighborhood plan, we need to see any of the grading per se.
Right.
Probably identify where the infiltration basins are and that kind of thing, but
Yeah.
I don't think we need to see the grading, but I think it's, it's clear this way so that we can see the parking counts, the, the, um, access drives, all of that stuff. You know, overlay tends to be a little hard to read sometimes.
Yep. Okay.
All right.
We'll pull that together.
Um, anything architecturally on the buildings change?
No, no, the buildings are all, are still the same as what was submitted back in May or June.
I don't think we had any comments on the architecture of those.
Uh, we do have, um, we do have some AC units that are going on the Franklin Park Drive side of the building, but we are screening those with landscaping.
These buildings are gonna just mimic the, uh, three buildings that are there.
Right. Yep. Yeah, I don't think we had any comments in terms of the architectural side of things. I think for that reason, because they were, you know, mimicking the other ones that are on site. Um, I think, uh, most of our comments were site related. For any of the access agreements and all of that, do you have those yet or do you need?
I don't recall seeing them.
Have you guys provided all the, the access agreements and parking easements and? Cause you are shared parking, right? Between the two sites?
Yeah, Ed, didn't we, uh, share that? Uh, we, we need six parking spots, uh.
Oh, yeah, I think they're talking about official documents like.
Yeah, we need those for review.
So we will have to have I N U Z E enrollments, uh, prepare that. But I think both parking lots on each property would be, um, would have to have cross access and parking agreements.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, if you can get us a copy of that legal agreement, that'd be great. So we can, maybe renew it.
Yep. Yeah, we can discuss that after this meeting, Steve.
Okay.
Yeah, just, I mean, a declaration of easement, uh, because you own all the properties should, uh, be suitable.
Hey, uh, Ed, what, what is the site lighting strategy for the new development versus what's there now?
There's a, I could talk about that, Ed. Um, I don't believe there's a, um, there's a lot of lighting there now. It's just, uh, there's, uh, we're, we're adding all these, uh, light poles at the opposite end of the parking lot from the building and so forth like that. Uh, I don't believe any building has that. We had, we built one of them, um, to the, on Kirkville Road, uh, to the, um, to the west. And I think we just had one, um, pole light in the middle of the parking lot and two, uh, next to the building. In this case, uh, I guess to get the lighting that's required now, we're putting poles, uh, on the, the perimeter of, uh, the parking lot as well as by the building. So there's gonna be a, a decent amount of light. It's, uh, I mean, it might be overkill for the park, but, uh, I guess that's the lighting requirements today. So.
But we'll, we'll have them on controls and they can be turned off or, or dimmed down low, um, after hours.
Yeah, there, we do have lighting requirements, so they'll need to be, they'll need to be set up on timers and.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about spillover too.
Right. Yeah, so a full lighting, lighting plan wouldn't.
Yeah, we can look at putting shields on the, the lights too, so that it's really directed at the parking lot.
I think the only lighting that it would affect, uh, any of the neighbors, and, and I don't know how much it would affect is the, is the eight twelve site. Um, but since you're, we're gonna have that, uh, detention retention area, um, which is gonna have, um, a lot of, I assume a lot of trees and so forth in there. Um, you know, that should be okay, but again, we can put the shields on it or timers. And so if the neighbors complain, we just shut them off, I guess.
Can you get us cut sheets for those lights, please?
Yeah, we should. Did you provide any?
Um, no, we have, we have the lighting submittal, so we can provide that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. What are the questions that the board have? They'll do, you know, planting reviews and, and all of that.
Yeah, I, I think the overall plan will be helpful just to put it in the context, but I don't have anything else right now.
Yeah. Overall plan of, uh, oh yeah, just the, of the two buildings that we're talking about, then plus the park. What's there now?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so, um, I have, um, get, uh, let's see, send plants along to Anadaga County DOT and WEP for comments, uh, putting together a cover sheet, um, reviewing the lighting and lighting controls, um, and providing cut sheets. I think we're, did I miss any other comments?
Legal parking, the declaration of easement.
Yeah, the legal parking.
Which I can get. I mean, you know, our, you know, I N U Z E will, will do.
County DOT is gonna wanna see your access, um,
Yep.
pathways, but, um, it's the SWIP that needs to go to DOT and WEP.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
Seems like it'll take us maybe two weeks to pull all this together.
All right, so two weeks, we'll put you back first meeting in November.
Okay.
Uh, it's the first meeting. Right, so yes, the twenty fourth would be your deadline, three P M on the twenty fourth, in order to get materials in to be on that first meeting in, in November.
Okay.
You have a target?
Sure. Well, we're at the hands of the government. So we'll, um, we'll get the, those documents in today or tomorrow to each of those agencies, um, so they can, I know Anadaga County DOT can turn plans around pretty quick uh, in comment letters. So we'll see, um, how WEP does.
I have a question, um, about, uh, um, the semi-clearing of the site. Um, we're trying to find, uh, trying to keep, uh, some uh, trees that are just already grown and native to the site, so to look like the park. Um, when could we start, uh, just, uh, identifying those and clearing the, the shrub and everything out of there? Now, do we need a permit for that or? Just to basically clear, um, not, uh, just cut down the trees that are dead and, uh, identify the ones that hopefully we can keep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're probably, they're probably subject to the bats, right? I mean, we got.
You can't cut any trees before November with the bats, um, and we need to wait till site plan approval to start clearing.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last, that thing, uh, if that was Alana, I didn't hear the last.
Wait till you get site plan approval to start clearing.
Oh, okay, so we can't do anything then until, uh, even after November.
Right now anyway, because, um, it's still bat season.
Right.
Till the end of October.
Okay. Cause that'll dictate on the landscaping drawing. I mean, we're talking about basically only the front of the buildings that face Franklin Park. Um, all the other trees, uh, you know, that, that's probably gonna change, but, uh, the front of the building to keep with the park, um, um, if we can save any of those on the Franklin Park Drive side.
Yeah, I mean, with, whatever you can save, we'd love to have you save. But until site plan review is complete, the bats have migrated elsewhere. Not a whole lot you can do.
Right, okay.
But yes, I applaud the, uh, the effort to, to save and maintain as much of the solid.
Well, we got, we got some, we got some grief last time when we built the other building, uh, that the foundation was already there and the site was cleared and we kept getting yelled at saying, now, why'd you clear the site? Like, we didn't clear the site. We bought it that way. So, um, anyways, uh, but yeah, we'd like to keep it, uh, at least looking at, like, with the building next door there, uh, you know, it's got some of those, uh, mature trees, which they might be garbage trees or whatever. I don't know, but, uh, um, it, it, it'll make the park look consistent.
Yep. We appreciate that. All right. Any other comments from the boards? Board?
Nope.
Anything else?
Good.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Great, thanks. We'll see ya.
All right, we'll see you later.
Bye.
Hey, next up, we will have Taco Bell, and it looks like, I think we have the applicants joining us now. So, Matt, you will be driving the show here.
Okay.
Screen is yours.
Okay, uh, let me just popper the whole thing open. And, uh, we got John. Okay, um.
So what we'll do, kind of have you give us an update, uh, talk about any of the responses to DOT comments, uh, how you responded to those. We'll target about fifteen minutes worth of time here, so.
Perfect. All right, so, um, again, Matt Apparel and Apparel Consulting, uh, our client, Mike McCracken, he was unavailable today. He's out in the West Coast. Uh, he apologizes that he can't join us today. Uh, with me and my design engineering colleague, John Basset. Um, oh, I'm just gonna go through this quickly just so we can, uh, make all this happen. Hold on, why won't she advance? There we goes. Okay, so the site is the former Mixer's Grill, uh, right off of Bridge Street and Marginal Way. Um, this, uh, location, as I think all of us know, has had some difficulties maintaining, uh, a vibrant restaurant spot at that location. This was submitted sometime earlier, I don't know if the early summer or late spring, um, of which, uh, we talked with the planning board and frankly, the, the access point was a major point of discussion and they asked us to go to both Rocco Conte, um, and Rocco asked us to go to New York State DOT. So, New York State DOT, uh, this is why it's been such a delay because, uh, the, the guys in the permitting office have been pretty busy all summer. Um, Jeff Deep pretty much told us, uh, you gotta give us two to three months, which it took all of that. Um, the end result of that was, uh, and, and we did have a traffic analysis by, um, uh, by GTS and Gordon Stansberry, uh, which was submitted to DOT. Um, essentially, the, the summation of the re, response from Jeff Deep at DOT was the analysis that the proposed development will not have a significant traffic impact. The southbound left turn lanes in from Bridge Street will not be permitted. Bridge Street will be limited to a right in, right out only. Access must be designed to adequately discourage prohibited movements. The marginal road enterprise, Parkway driveway must be a hundred foot minimum from the Bridge Street line. And we, we've got, um, that, uh, then I'll talk about that in a second. We'll talk about the plan. And then a sidewalk along the property frontage will be required to accommodate pedestrians. We then took this response, uh, we, uh, forwarded over to Rocco. Rocco's email response to us is, uh, the DeWitt Highway Department concurs and states with a stated analysis of the access drive on marginal road, a minimum a hundred feet from the east line of Bridge Street. Hence, we submitted, uh, to the planning board a site plan. And, and I'm gonna go to the next sheet, but I just wanted to show this, um, full-size site plan, and I kind of blew this up so we can read it better. The hundred-foot separation distance is from the, uh, the line of Bridge Street and, and to the, uh, west side of our curb cut. That is the hundred foot. When you actually talk about the exiting traffic, it's more like a hundred and thirty feet away. So that, uh, new intersection satisfies, uh, what DOT is asking for and hence what Rocco has agreed with. Um, I'm just gonna enter through. I got some blowups here. The other piece of right in, right out with, um, a proper design of, uh, preventing that, uh, illegal unwarranted left turn movement with, uh, a obtuse angle for that right in, right out. Again, the proposed access off of marginal road being a hundred feet from Bridge Street. The other thing that, uh, this plan will require, and, and as a request of Hospitality Restaurant Group is, um, a monument sign, but they'd like it to be eight foot tall. That'll be something to be discussed, both with planning and zoning board of appeals. Um, there is a slight encroachment where the property takes a weird angle here off of marginal way. Um, to get our circulation driveways, um, from, from that entry of marginal, where we will be asking for a, uh, landscape buffer variance just at this corner. Um, it gets tight there to fit everything in and to get the drive-through movements appropriate. The other thing is, is, uh, I know it'll be a point of conversation is based on the layout and what operations for a hospitality restaurant group are asking for. Um, the dumpster will be sitting up front. It will be a total enclosure to match the facade of the building, but as well, we'll have a screening around it, but that'll be a point of conversation, I'm sure, with the board. The, uh, we got some quick building elevations of what this will look like. Uh, this is, uh, the, uh, current scheme of Taco Bell in which, uh, again, the, the facade treatments, uh, can be, um, color adjusted slightly. Um, but, uh, a nice looking, uh, drive-through restaurant piece. Uh, so we have front, uh, rear and both side elevations submitted. Uh, and that's what this, uh, monument sign will look like. The, the, uh, my, the logo of Taco Bell with, uh, with the drive-through symbol, I, the symbol. So that's a quick summary, guys, uh, and I can go to any of those sheets. Uh, we appreciate going right to a work session with you, um, to kick off this, uh, resumittal and, uh, look forward to comments and how we can advance this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back and you just go back to the blow-up site plan. It would give us a frame of reference. So, yeah, that one's perfect. Um, I think you identified a lot of the points that we, I think we'll wanna talk about, uh, appreciate working with DOT and the town on access to marginal there. Um, I don't think anybody really has comment or issue on that one at this point. We'll have to get that, that landscape variant, so we'll need to take care of that.
What about parking? How many parking spaces are you providing?
Uh, we have, go ahead, John.
I was gonna say, we'll have twenty-one. We know that we'll also need to get variants for that. Any more would really be overparking for this Taco Bell.
How many are you required to have?
Uh, the requirement is forty-three.
Is that on, is that on the other sheet, John? I can blow up to it, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, it's on the other one. It's, uh, forty-three spaces.
So you're looking to go from forty-three down to twenty-one?
I believe so. I know the owner had discussed quitting some di, uh, some diagonals parking spaces along the east side of the drive-through to accommodate, uh, employee parking. I believe we can fit another six to eight spaces there.
So the, the one thing with this, and I know that you, you can't base it on the, a single tenant use, but, um, Hospitality Restaurant Group has about thirty of, uh, this prototype throughout, uh, upstate New York. And, uh, post-COVID, their, their customer base is the drive-through, of which the current facility, uh, uh, in the plaza off of, uh, off of Erie has terrible drive-through access. That's why they're, uh, the franchise is looking to upgrade that facility, but they're getting uh, eighty-five to ninety percent of their business through drive-through service. The need for, uh, internal, uh, restaurant, uh, people coming into the store and sitting down and eating is less and less post-COVID. So, uh, they feel more than comfortable that what is shown here is more than adequate. And frankly, well, half of those spaces will be vacant based on their model even at lunchtime. But that again can be reviewed and discussed. And again, there's potentially ample room to add parking, but why build more parking than you absolutely need?
Well, there's a couple, couple things. If we're, if we're talking about parking right now, we, we can place twenty-five percent of the parking in reserve, but it has to be shown that it can be built and dedicated to parking. So twenty-five percent of forty-three is eleven spots, basically. So you would need to show eleven spots. I mean, you, yeah, right? You'd have to show eleven spots in reserve and then the rest, the balance, you would have to request a variance to get reduced, which.
The twenty-five can help in reserve for stores and shopping centers are greater than ten thousand square feet, uh, and office use. I'm not sure that it's restaurants. Oh.
It's not on this one.
Yep, can do that.
All right, never mind. No reserve. So at this point, you're gonna be requesting from us and the Z V A for over a fifty percent reduction in parking. I will say that's a, that's a steep hill to climb.
Yep.
Um, you know, I, I would, well, let me, let me back up. What is happening on that green area to the southeast?
Well, the, uh, as of this time, i- it's totally unknown, but what, uh, com, side conversations were that this property is very expensive and the ownership group, uh, with Hospitality Restaurant, uh, are thinking that they will be looking for a potential um, the small user in that green area and hold it in reserve, but they have no idea at this point in time and, uh, are indicating to us, you know, this is again, a point of conversation of how many, uh, parking spaces we have to provide and to show, you know, whether hardscape or in reserve, and then, um, see what they have potentially left due to the, uh, uh, market value of the property, which, uh, again, that's out of my, out of my realm. And Mike can answer to that more than I, but, uh, they, they have, uh, an inkling that they need to, uh, put something else there in the future, maybe. And I don't know what. I, I, we really haven't had conversations other than we leave as much green as we can and we don't need more than parking than we need to provide.
Are they, are they talking about subdividing this off into a separate parcel or keeping it as? Are they, are they talking about subdividing this off into a separate parcel, or keeping it as one site?
Oh, I I I don't think you can subdivide it, uh you know, I think it would be all uh one ownership with potentially two users.
So I think. What we would need to see in order to be remotely comfortable with any of this is. Essentially a master plan for that site.
Okay.
Because right now. By right, you need to double the amount of parking that you're showing onsite. That's not gonna leave you much room left over. That's in there. So we understand the model that you don't believe that you need. All of that parking, but as a board and as the town, we need to look at this as if Taco Bell goes out of business tomorrow. And somebody else comes in.
Understood.
So, we understand that you may not need that amount of parking, and we're all for reducing the amount of parking that's there. But I'm not entirely sure that you're gonna get a fifty percent reduction in parking. The other thing that needs to be addressed with this, and which may impact your layout. Is. We've talked previously, I think when you guys came in and did a presentation, is starting to kinda move that building. Up to the street. To start to define. The Bridge Street corridor, connecting it to the sidewalk, creating kind of a walkable environment. Um. And how you might do that. I don't know that we've seen any attempt to kind of what that's gonna look like yet. But that may push your parking to the rear of the building, which may afford a little bit more. Uh efficiency, if you will. And then.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Let me make one last point, then you can kinda comment on all of these.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
The other is. Your your drive-through parking requires. Six cars from the order board, and that's for each lane back, and you're only showing three on each, so your stacking lane is gonna extend across that drive aisle. In this scenario.
Okay.
Alright.
Well, and I, my only comment was, is is I I know that we, based on that early conversation, uh did did look at a couple schemes on, let's call it onion skin, computer onion skin. The uh the difficulty is that drive-through. Circulation and to make it customer-friendly, and uh by keeping the building snug to Bridge Street, uh that becomes a difficulty of. What does that drive-through lane look like uh to make it operational, um and uh the counterclockwise movement. Through the parking area without impacting uh either uh, you know, certainly the right-ins coming off of Bridge Street or or the access, but we can look at it again, no question about it, I appreciate the comment.
Okay.
Um what happened to that cross-connect with the hotel?
The the access drive, the access drive still comes out to Enterprise here, and so that's, that's the driveway sitting off here to the east side. Um uh that is, I believe, John helped me, was that on survey as an easement right, or is that just a a pavement access to the backside of the hotel?
They do have access rights via that driveway.
Can you uh provide me with that documentation?
Yeah, we have it on survey right now, Jamie, so we can uh certainly provide on existing condition survey, I can ask the surveyors if he has any information.
Yes, to to show it on there, but also the actual document that.
Sure, yeah, I'll see if the surveyor can find that for us.
Thank you.
Okay. Um.
And please send it to the uh to the department, um to Eric and Alana and and to me.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um the town would also like to see sidewalk along all road frontages.
Okay, so I I didn't, I didn't really point that out, we we've got it here now, but you wanna extend that along marginal?
Yes, and enterprise. Along all the road frontage.
So we would, we would extend that all the way to where my cursor is here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um. As we're. Yeah, um. With respect to the dumpster, I I'm just gonna tell you right now, it's a non-starter. Uh it's, it's not allowed in the front yard, and we certainly don't want a dumpster from a fast food chain. Up along Bridge Street in the front of the building. Um so let's find a different location for that, which is compliant.
Understood.
The right in, right out. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Is it just simply striped, or what is preventing somebody from making that left-hand turn?
So, so this will be a raised island with six-inch reveal curving, probably, uh it's in the DOT right away, so it'll be granite curbing. Obviously, DeWitt, we need granite curbing anyway, so it'll all, it'll all be curved, and this will be an island piece.
Okay.
Did the state approve that design?
They have, they have seen this uh revised layout, and they, again, under. The DOT preliminary phase one, they've agreed to this uh both this layout and the uh the distance uh measurement that we're showing off of marginal, so. So, under, again, concept they have, and the the next stage, uh uh parallel with site planning board would be a. Phase two, which is design development of showing them uh DOT set of plans for that work.
If I saw a SWIP for this.
So uh again, under, at at this level, we have not prepared the stormwater. Um I think we uh started to look at it with regards to existing impervious to propose it would be. You know, satisfy under redevelopment, but we have not gone into the detail of the stormwater analysis yet.
Okay, we're going to need that, um also, that's gonna need to go to state DOT and.
Understood.
Uh. And then, I think the. The last. Point that we'll kind of talk about right now is certainly that sign. Uh. First, I'm seeing the sign on here, but my fast feedback on that one. Really is that it does not match anything else kind of along that corridor, and certainly at eight feet tall. Yeah, drive-through can't be on there. I think you can have, you can have the business name and the address. Are the only things that could be on there? Um. And it, I'm not sure AP tall is gonna fly, frankly.
Understood.
The the bell. And and that look is not something that's ever been approved. From an architectural standpoint, there's, you know, like. Something small next to the words has been approved as a logo, but nothing like that ever.
Understood.
Kinda, I think, I think referring to the Taco Bell on Thompson Road would be a good start, cause there's a lot of similarities, and going back to the parking discussion. When that project and that site plan was approved. Uh it was approved with significantly more parking, you know, it was so from a precedent point of view, I think. I think there's close to forty spots on the Thompson Road site of a similar size and magnitude. Development. So. We've. I think we looked at that one for the same reasons that the parking was needed.
We'll uh we'll refer to that, appreciate that.
Of course, the funny thing is, I've been there, and there's never anybody.
Exactly. And I, you know, hey, you know, I've been in the game, so I understand the, you know, you guys gotta cover yourself for, uh you know, uh the future, and we don't know what the future uh revolves around. And certainly with this difficult site, we know that it's uh had a high turnover rate in the in in the realm here at this corner.
Yep. Yes, is it, yeah, they're gonna look at what options might exist to. To move that building up closer to Bridge to kind of reorganize, and I like Doug Doug's suggestion, take a look at at Thompson Road and. See now that might work.
When you move the building up, if you could make it parallel to the road too, that would be great.
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll see what we can do, I'm all about parallel perpendicular, and that's why I'm a, I call myself a box engineer, so.
Yeah, the Thompson Road one, we're just looking at that right now, and it looks like that one's up against the road, it looks walkable, pedestrian access to the sidewalk. Um that's what we're aiming for here.
Space for a nice little patio out front. What other questions from the board?
Right.
Um actually, uh Nathan, architecturally, have we made it that far to look at the building elevations, or are we not there yet?
Yeah, we looked at them previously, I think this is what the update is here, I think it it's very similar to the Thompson Road. Aesthetic.
Yes, it is pretty much identical.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't vary, once they, this is a new prototype um type of uh. Uh layout and scheme, what's this one called? The Endeavor or something, John?
Endeavor two point O.
So I don't know who the actual architect is on this one, but make sure that they're actually showing what rooftop equipment is gonna be on there.
Guys.
Will want that to be screened.
Right.
Looks like there's gonna be multiple signs, we'll be looking at variances for that as well.
Yeah, I'll I'll be honest, we haven't got into sign code and sizes and the number to uh, but that that'll be our next uh. Discussion with Hospitality Restaurant of of uh where they are and. Uh the first crack, uh I'll be honest, they're pretty optimistic, and um um we've we've tried to. Relay some of your comments to them, but um they've fallen on a little bit of mute ears, I'll call it.
Alright, well.
I appreciate your comments, this is all good stuff, gives us plenty to work on, um we will relay this to uh Mr. McCracken and his team. And uh get to back to the drawing board and see what we can do for you guys.
I appreciate it, we're looking forward to seeing this site actually being activated.
I agree.
Alright.
Alright, guys.
Very much. Alright, we'll see ya. Once there.